All the meeting to order, everyone rise please and say the prayer and pledge of allegiance. Our Father.
Who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The land is the kingdom, and power, and glory, forever and ever. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll make a change on the agenda. We'll start with J nine. Get started here, we have. J nine is acceptance of a donation from the Napoleon Nazarene Church. Joel, you want to?
Yeah, Chip, do you want to? So I've been here before, obviously, but it's been our practice every year to have a host and coordinate a 5K that we have always branded as a run for the city. We feel very, very much a part of this community. Want to be a good community partner, not just talk about how much we love our community, but tangibly show ways that we do that. So we do this every year. I think we were three years, it's been close to fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand dollars. So obviously this year looked a lot different. But we decided to do it anyway. We had to do it virtually. So it wasn't an onsite thing, but I tell you what, it was something that our community rallied around. And at the end of the day, even in a COVID pandemic, we were able to still raise three thousand five hundred dollars. And so, yeah, just want to present that to Parks and Rec once again. And I hope you guys, I know, I think we planned on the pool, some of the things at the pool that's coming this next year. But I'm just proud to be a part of this community and want to continue to partner in tangible ways to make this a better place and so on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to accept this donation.
I move.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
All right. It's been accepted. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Sure.
And you're welcome to stay for the next three hours if you want.
Thanks, Chip.
All right, we'll move on to item C, approval of minutes. In the absence of any objections or corrections, a minute from October nineteenth, two thousand twenty, regular council meeting, shall stand approved. Hearing none, they stand approved. Item D, citizen communication. If there's anyone out in the audience that wants to address council on anything that is not on the agenda, please step forward now. And if there's anyone on the WebEx, type something in the chat and we will call on you and read your question. We'll get started with item E, reports from council committees. E one, Finance Budget Committee met on October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty, and recommended approval of the supplemental number six to City Council. E two, Safety Human Resource Committee, scheduled for October twenty-sixth, was canceled due to lack of agenda items. And E two, Technology Committee, met earlier this evening with the following agenda items.
Thank you, Council President. We discussed a cybersecurity update and the capital replacement plan.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item G. Introduction of new ordinances and resolutions. G one is ordinance number zero five four dash two zero. An ordinance amending certain sections of chapter nine fifty-five of the codified ordinances of the City of Napoleon, Ohio, specifically section nine five five point one six regarding current municipal swimming pool administration rates, also adding section nine five five point one six G regarding corporate membership pool admission rates. Joel? I'm sorry, motion?
Second.
Second. Now, Joel?
Thank you, Council President. We talked about this in the Parks and Rec Board Meeting, and it was recommended that we come up with new rates for this new Napoleon Aquatic Center. We also added the corporate memberships as a recommendation too. It seems to be working pretty well for the golf course, but we think that the corporate memberships for the swimming pool might have a bigger reach because of the, you know, more uses. More people would be apt to use the pool than they would, than they would a golf course. If they're not a golfer, they're not going to use the corporate membership for golf course, so. But basically, the theme of the fee structure is that since the residents and corporations inside of the city limits are the ones paying for the pool through the property tax levy, that they should have discounted rates. So you'll see the, you know, going down the line, you'll see the, like, item one here, family up to five members, resident, hundred dollars, hundred dollar family membership. That didn't move, so that's going to stay the same. The non-resident fee used to be one twenty-five is now going to be two hundred. Additional family members, too, that's outlined in here. I don't know if you want me to go through each one individually. I see some heads shaking, no. So I'll just scroll through them and you can just kind of see that the theme kind of stays the same. Just, you know, childcare provider was added, so if you have like a babysitter or somebody that, you know, watches kids, they can get into. For the most part. We also did the ten-day visit pass. So somebody can get a, you know, a ten-day card. Adults and kids, seniors. Keep scrolling through here. Okay, so the rental, the facility rental itself. There is an option for residents and non-residents to rent that facility. That includes the lifeguards that come with it when they rent the facility. So it's fully staffed, facility rental. And then it gets into the corporate membership, so. And this is essentially the, what the corporate membership covers is employees of a business that, and the business is inside of the corporation limits. And it has to be the employees that are employed inside of the corporation limits, too. So in, in other words, McDonald's, you know, he can't be a, you know, McDonald's have a corporate membership and then, you know, somebody from, you know, outside of the area getting, you know, getting the passes there, so. That's the intent on that. But this, the corporate membership includes family memberships for all employees. So they get the same family memberships as the, as anybody else. So that's why we think we'll get, we might get more usage out of this than we would of the golf corporate membership. And that about covers it, so that'll take any questions.
I understand the lesser cost for residents, but I know at the time that the whole pool was being discussed, we, there was suggestions of maybe like a free pass day or something like that for residents. Was that discussed at all?
I don't remember that being discussed at all.
Free pass day?
Yeah, free day for residents.
I don't think we talked about that specifically, but it doesn't mean we can't have those types of days during the course of the year. In fact, I was talking to a local business person that had some ideas that he shared with me from a different community that he came from that had one dollar day for a business with sponsor or things like that. So as, as we get into the season there, we can probably set up some sort of special days like that. I'm sure we'll probably go free day for Fourth of July like we normally do. I've obviously got changing, so we can always look at that kind of thing.
Just curious. I know we talked about, like, the zoo does that, too.
Yep.
So I just, just wondered. Thank you, Tony.
Any other questions or comments? Rox, please call the roll.
Joe.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Okay, that will move on to second reads. Item G two is resolution number zero five five dash two zero. A resolution authorizing a community reinvestment area CRA agreement between the City of Napoleon, Ohio and MSG Investments LTD with Napoleon CRA number six and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion?
A motion. Second.
Joel?
Thank you. Okay, so the CIC got an application for a CRA agreement and for, I don't know if Molly or Ross, how familiar you are with CRA agreements. It stands for Community Reinvestment Act. And the city has designated CRA areas within the city limits that allows for the city to offer property tax abatements and to, you know, entice them or incentivize them, I should say, to develop in the City of Napoleon. So we have, I believe, ten that are in place, maybe a few more than that actually, maybe twelve that are in place right now. And a lot of them are more recent. Actually, a couple of them are falling off with a couple of property transfers happening, so. Anyway, this company, MSG Group, is the owner of the Trailwind Apartments on Trail Drive. And I believe it was two years ago, council approved of a CRA agreement. It was ten years at fifty percent. And they built twenty-four unit, a twenty-four unit apartment complex. And they seem to be going well. They want to do, make more investments here and they've requested that, the same thing, for the same number of units, too. At first I had heard that it was just twelve units, but now it's twenty-four units. So they're going to do an additional twenty-four unit apartment complex right off Trail Drive on some land that they acquired from another business owner. So that's the request right now. The agreement itself mirrors. Let me just zoom this out a little bit on this, this one, I have to do it a little differently. And it just, it mirrors the other one in that it's, but it's the, it's the same thing. The dates are changed, some of the numbers slightly changed, but other than that, it's essentially the same agreement, so. Trying to get down to the, here's the project. Estimated roughly two point five million dollar project cost. Twenty-four residential units. What else? Think that, you know, they do have staff. Now they're going to have maintenance and things like that, upkeep on the property, properties. And this gets, this does get reviewed by the TIRC, Tax Incentive Review Committee, every year. There's no payment in lieu of taxes, but there is an annual fee that they do pay as well that goes to the CIC as our, as our agent, so to speak, city or its agent. And that about covers it, so. I don't know if anybody has questions on this or comments and.
Joel being fairly green to CRA agreements.
Yep.
Twenty-four housing units sound great. What is the cost to the city in something like this?
Miniscule. Property, the property tax abatement, the city only recovers very, very small portion of the property tax altogether. So it's, what we collect in property tax is strictly for the police and fire pension funds. And it's, and it's a small portion compared to the larger pie. I believe it's a point six mil and point three mil for police and fire. I will say though, one comment I do have about that, so. You know, we always talk about and hear about how people are trying to attract more employees to the city. You know, how do you attract more employees? Well, one of the issues is that we don't, you know, we don't have enough housing. There's not enough listings, there's not enough apartments available, things like that. And this is that type of transition housing. You'll see in some of the, some of the stuff that we've got coming up for budget, you'll see kind of the progression of, you know, the types of housing growth that we're seeing and kind of captured in a, in a document that is really helpful. So we've got a, we're covering all of our bases, but, you know, this, this type of, you know, transition type housing for people to move in, get established and maybe buy a house or something is, is, is one of the things that we're kind of lacking right now, so. This company sees a need for that here because, you know, obviously they, they just built twenty-four units and are, are turning around right now as soon as those are done on the heels of that and building twenty-four more. So that's the, that's the one comment I have about, you know, this type of housing. And I think it's, I think it's appropriate for the area that it is. It's just kind of a continuation of that, of that section of the city. I'm sorry, Councilman Barry.
Yeah, just one technical question. Is this new set of twenty-four apartments going to be basically across the street from the one he just built, or is it up close to that dentist office? The ones they just filled at the end of Trail Drive.
They, they bought the property from Keith Frucci, so I think there's a kind of a vacant lot somewhere in that same side of the road, I believe.
Be just to the east of the units that they already built.
So it is on the same side of the road?
Same side of the street.
I believe it is, yes. Yeah.
That's one I was trying to figure out with that.
Yeah, and he, I don't think Keith owned any of the, doesn't own any of the property.
On their side, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is space there between him and Frucci's and.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, Joel.
Yep.
Yes, I don't see any negative side of CRA agreements. In the three or four years being on council and going over these, to me, it just encourages people to, in this case, build apartments or whatever they may be building for living space. And then we also have businesses that, that may have a business here in town and they may want to expand. And that allows them to do so with still staying in Napoleon. Maybe if we don't give these people that CRA agreement, they'll say, well, I can build my apartment complex outside of city limits or something, so. Is there anything I'm missing that, a negative side of this?
No, I don't, I don't believe that. Because even, this company that bought this property is out of Bowling Green. And this, the original CRA was actually endorsed by a local business owner. And, you know, one of the comments that was made back then was, well, let's show this company that we're easy to do business with and maybe they'll do more business with us. Well, look, now they're doing more business here. Or something that, there is a need here in the city. So the positive side is that I think that this council, obviously the mayor and everybody that's in key positions in the community sees the value in offering incentives and being business friendly. Because probably, you've heard me say this before, economic development's a long game. And that rooftop that gets built will always be there. That tax incentive, that's short-term, will go away someday. So that's, to me, it's easy math. If you're trying to build the community in the, in the right ways. Not, not everything should get a CRA. Please don't take it that way. But it's, the ones that you want, the ones that matter, the ones that you, that adhere to your master plan, you know, are the ones you want to incentivize and encourage more people to come in and do business and make investments. So that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
That one will, to move on to second read. Moving on to item G three, ordinance number zero five six dash two zero. An ordinance declaring the improvement of certain parcels of real property to be a public purpose, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designating specific public infrastructure improvements made to be made or in the process of being made that directly benefit or that once made will directly benefit the parcels for which improvement is declared to be a public purpose. Requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, providing related authorizations pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section five seven zero nine point four zero B, five seven zero nine point four two, five seven zero nine point four three, five seven zero nine point eight three two, and five seven zero nine point eight five, and approving compensation agreements with the Boards of Education of the Napoleon Area Schools District and the Liberty Center Local School District.
Motion.
Second.
Sure you want me to read it again? How is that just one sentence? There's not one period. All right, Joel, tell us what that means, would you?
Well, this is the ordinance that would establish a TIF district in the city of Napoleon limits. As you probably know already, the Napoleon Area School District and Liberty Center School Districts both approved resolutions to authorize the, their approval of the, of the TIF district with the terms that it is a thirty-year TIF district and is a hundred percent, what we refer to as a hundred percent thirty-year rolling TIF district with a twenty-five percent, you know, payment in lieu of taxes, too. So TIF districts, I don't know how much detail you want me to go into. I've got loads of information, but I'll just try to keep it as a brief summary, if that's okay. And, you know, you can ask more questions. I can deliver a lot more information if you want. But it essentially works similar to a CRA whereby it's the, the landowner. So I've got the, I've got the map up right now and the, and the area that's inside of the city limits. So this is the edge of the city limits. So everything in, all the parcels that are outlined in yellow are in the TIF district. And any improvements, so they will always have to pay the property taxes that they pay now on the value of the land or whatever they have on their property. Any improvements that are made going forward, that additional tax value will then get paid into the TIF fund. And that TIF fund will be used to, used to pay down the debt for the, the project that's, that's right here. So we got the red line that's already in progress. That's funded mostly by grant money and private funds. The remainder is, will also be funded by grant funds and the, and whatever's left over, which is estimated at about one point five million dollars, will be eventually paid for through the TIF district. So on the back end of this, we're planning to come to council, if approved, with a, the, the opportunity to obtain a CIB loan, State Infrastructure Bank loan, to, that way we can cash flow the project and then that debt service gets paid off by the TIF district. So, yeah, both school districts were, you know, were on board, they passed resolutions. What winds up happening is in this one, and this is a little bit of a unique thing because you have two school districts, right? Usually it's just one school district. This is, and, you know, it just about splits the, you know, the properties in half. And what winds up happening is after the debt service is paid off for American Road in Oakwood, that portion, the TIF reverts to what's referred to as a non-school TIF. And in that case, the, the schools will then get the, the full amount that they would have otherwise gotten. But it won't be in the, in the traditional sense. It'll be in, as unrestricted funds. I won't go into details on that, but they'll get their full amount in unrestricted funds and the remainder will still go to the city, come to the city for future other improvements that are, that may be needed over here. So it'll just be thirty years of that sort of, you know, it's, and, and I'm sorry, TIF stands for Tax Incentive Financing, or Tax Increment Financing. And what, so that's the increment. So you're incrementally, you know, building up so that you can, you know, pay off larger projects or, you know, use it for your, for your, it's for infrastructure, so. And any infrastructure, it can be used for any infrastructure in this area that benefits the TIF district. Let me give an example. If, you know, years from now, this portion of Oakwood north of American Road would need improvements, the TIF district can be used for that. If we want to extend industrial drive to, to cover these two, two parcels up here, that road can be extended, the TIF funding can be used for that. So, you know, any other improvements that are needed in this area, that's what, that's what this covers, so. It's, there was a lot of, you know, little, I shouldn't say a lot, a little bit of consternation about the thirty-year length of time, but overall, I think the schools saw the value and, and just like, you know, anybody would that sees the value. And if you've been down American Road before that construction started, that, that portion of American Road was in disrepair and getting, getting worse. There's a lot of, that used to be, so the history of that is that used to be a county road when all these properties annexed in and then, you know, it wasn't built for the industrial traffic that it gets now. And I think that's, it's starting to see the, the wear and tear, so. Timing's pretty good with everything that's going on over there, setting up this TIF district makes, makes a lot of sense, so.
So the more development, the more you'll collect, so the better.
Correct.
But is that, does it provide any sort of incentive to business or simply?
It does not.
Okay, doesn't deter in any way, though, either?
Nope. I guess the, I guess the thought process behind this is that you don't have the infrastructure that meets the needs now. So if you're going to have industry, industry out here, and it is all zoned industrial, it's, it's the roads themselves that just aren't, aren't adequate for.
So in that way, it might incentivize people?
Right, yeah, having that infrastructure in place, you know, you get a lot of, if you've seen it before, I think, Mary, you've seen it before, too, the, the leads that come in through Jobs Ohio. And, you know, they, they're always, everything about it is, is, you know, does it, you know, land availability, you know, infrastructure, 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 utilities, you know, it's all about, you know, what's there to service that property. And anybody who's serious that goes over there, you know, sees a big upfront expense, to be quite honest. That's, you know, when they, when they drive down the roads. So now it'll be beefed up. beefed up, you know, catch some people's eyes a little more. I know there's some motivated landowners over there, too.
Joel, this essentially free up a little bit more dollars to spend on other streets in the city that's not out by the industrial park. Because, I mean, we've done a lot around the industrial park, which is all needed, and I think it encourages businesses to expand or move there. But as a resident, I've also thought, oh, hey, we were going to do maybe this project, but hey, we had to do something out there.
Yes.
With the TIF district, then having the funds available to pay for that, that should free up some more.
Yep.
For in town.
Yeah, so, correct, I just want to be sure that, you know, understand that the city is the backstop. So, will always be the backstop, it's our infrastructure, it's our CIB loan, we're just collecting on the, to try to pay down as much as we can. We can also backload, so we'll get into that when we get into the CIB loan if this is approved, that it can be, you know, backloaded a little bit, so that, you know, some of the CRAs that are in place, like American Road Holdings and Chank's, and I think, I think that's it, can actually, you know, down the road, that improve, those improvements that they've made can then go into that calculation of paying down that debt. So, so that's kind of the thought process here, too. But yes, overall, it's going to reduce our capital cost, I guess, liability, if you will, for roads that, you know, one way or another, these roads need to be done, right? But the value of this is that we're able to get these roads rebuilt in a way that we need them to be rebuilt. The city, you know, most likely wouldn't spend that amount of money to beef up that infrastructure the way it needs to be, industrial strength roads, you know, without, we just wouldn't be able to bear that cost in this short a time, in this economy with the opportunities that are out there, we just wouldn't be able to do it. So, you know, timing's everything, and it's just unfortunate that we were positioned well enough to be able to establish a TIF district. But in the end, at the end of the day, the city is the backstop. So, if there is even a portion of that debt service that does need to be paid, I mean, then, you know, the city would have to cover it. But one way or another, we'd have to cover it regardless, if you catch my drift, these roads can't be left to sit the way they are for much longer. So...
So, are, will CRAs be, are they still eligible in that area, or no longer?
They are. But that also just has to be factored into the, the way that we'll have to, you know, look at, view some of these developments in the future is, you know, how does it impact our, the revenues to go towards that, you know, debt repayment?
Right. We've been working on this for quite a long time. Good job.
Any other questions or comments? Hey, Rocks, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Moving on to item G4, is Resolution Number 057-20, an ordinance supplementing the annual appropriation measure, Supplement Number 6, for the year 2020, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Kelly?
Thank you. This is to supplement into Fund 250, the local coronavirus relief fund. We receive additional CARES Act funding under amounts received as $295,745.35.
All right. Anybody have any questions or comments? Hey, Rocks, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item G5, Resolution Number 058-20, a resolution authorizing the utilization of CARES Act funding for the purpose of reimbursement to cover personnel costs for the city of Napoleon, Ohio, consistent with the requirements of Section 5001 of the CARES Act as described in 42 U.S.C. 801, formerly 42 U.S.C. 601D, and any applicable regulations as is necessary pursuant to HB 481, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Kelly?
Thank you. This is legislation to cover us reimbursing the personnel cost because of the COVID, and this is what we went over in the Finance and Budget Committee. The next two coming after will be for that purpose, too. We have to have it encumbered by November 20th, and then we have to have it spent by December 28th.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Hearing none. Rocks, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item G6, Resolution Number 059-20, a resolution authorizing the utilization of CARES Act funding for the purpose of reimbursement to cover the costs of public safety measures in the city of Napoleon, Ohio, consistent with the requirements of Section 5001 of the CARES Act as described in 42 U.S.C. 801, formerly 42 U.S.C. 601D, and any applicable regulations as is necessary pursuant to HB 481, and declaring an emergency. You have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Kelly?
Thank you. This is to cover the operational expenditure portion of the COVID for the PPE, the sanitizers, the Corex T360 machines, the laptops and all that stuff, the touchless faucets, and any operational expenditures related to the COVID expenses.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments for Kelly? Hearing none. Rocks, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Okay, that will be moving on as well. Item G7, is Resolution Number 061-20, a resolution authorizing the utilization of CARES Act funding consistent with the requirements of Section 5001 of the CARES Act as described in 42 U.S.C. 801, formerly 42 U.S.C. 601D, and any applicable regulations as is necessary pursuant to HB 481 for the purpose of reimbursement for the purchase and installation of GPS needlepoint bipolar ionization technology from Campbell Mechanical Services Incorporated, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Kelly?
Thank you. This is for the air purification system for our public buildings, for the administration building and municipal court, to reduce the exposure for the COVID-19. And then those four ordinances will ask for suspension on Friday when the second read happens, so that we can have enough time to get all that money encumbered. Thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments? Hey, Rocks, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Okay, we will move on to item H, second readings of ordinances and resolutions. H1 is Resolution Number 052-20, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an annexation agreement with Napoleon Township for the annexation of 3.038 acres of land owned by William R. Myers. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you. Nothing new to report on this. Just as a reminder, this is annexation of the land just south of Meyerholz Park.
All right, any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Rocks, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item H2, Ordinance Number 053-20, an ordinance to amend Chapter 194, specifically Section 194.081, credit for tax paid, City of Napoleon of the codified ordinances of City of Napoleon regarding municipal income tax, amending ordinance number 053-15, and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Joel?
Thank you, Council President. This is for the reciprocity issue, and I don't have anything else to report than what's already been reported. I haven't received any comments or anything else, so at this point, so I'll just open it up for any questions or dialogue.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Actually, I received quite a bit of feedback after last council meeting. So, I'd just like to hit on a couple of points. And Chief O'Brien, if you don't mind, got a couple of questions for you. Joel, I'll kind of rely on you, too, here. So, Chief, just prior to the COVID and CARES Act money, can you just explain a little bit what the process was like when you guys would get an overlapping call, being short-staffed?
Okay, so the overlapping calls that we had talked about before, what that means is when we already are on one incident, and we have a second incident that comes in at the same time, so requires additional people for that second call. Prior to COVID, so like right now with the CARES funding, we were able to have the four individuals at the station, so we're able to kind of reap the benefits of what we're trying to see what this is going to do, you know, for us. But before then, when there was only two people at the station, if we had an overlapping call, those individuals were already on the run, then it's automatic in our protocol, or dispatch's protocol, that it's seven minutes, if there's no response from a local responder that responds into the station to be able to take that second call, that after seven minutes, they dispatch out Ridgeville, or whoever that, you know, mutual aid person, people would be. So, if it's seven minutes there, then it takes Ridgeville, would have to respond into their station about, you say, three to four minutes to get to their station, and then could be anywhere between eight and 15 minutes by the time that they actually get to the scene, depending on the location. So, that would be the pre-COVID, when you had the overlapping calls, where we talked about 450. I think we're at 405, which was about three or four weeks ago. We were already at 405 overlapping calls this year, but we are, we're right around that 450 in the years before.
Perfect. Alongside of the overlapping calls, can you just talk about the trend in call volume over the past several years? And Joel, if you can, I know there's been a chart providing this info, just with the increase, if you can just speak to kind of what we're seeing trend-wise?
So, last year, again, for, since I've been chief, every single year I've had to tell you that we've hit records as far as the amount of calls for service that we had. Last year, we hit 1,646 calls for service. This year, as of about, I ran the numbers last week, and they were super busy on Thursday and Friday. Thursday, they did nine calls, Friday did 10 calls. So, this number is very fluid on a daily. But right now, we're trending at 4.66 calls on average per day, and if we keep that trend up, we will hit 1,700 is what it's at right now. It's 1,701, actually, for the total calls for service for the year.
Can you just explain a little bit, I guess, the reasoning behind that and our best estimate?
So, well, there's, we, we're definitely not experiencing what the call decreases like other communities have. So, I've talked to a lot of fire chiefs and a lot of other agencies, I said that since COVID, they've experienced a 40 to some 50% reduction in the amount of calls for service that they've seen. We haven't seen that, but we have, what I always, what I would like to think that it is, based on all the data that we've gathered, is the demographics of Napoleon. We are just built a little different. Our population is elderly population 6% greater than what it is on national level, and so, and the amount, the types of individuals that we care for. So, those individuals tend to need our service a little bit more. In the cases of COVID, that's what is, I mean, we've definitely been taking a lot of those types of patients as well, so we haven't seen any decrease at all. If I could add to that, I have the chart up on the screen, so if you can see that, that's up there. The other item is that, just to get back to, you know, the aging population. So, the Census Bureau has Napoleon since the year 2000 increasing in age, in median age. So, the median age went up from age 36.2 to age 41.2 in a, you know, roughly, now, personally, I think that trend is actually going to reverse and start coming back down and at least flatten out. But it also is, oddly enough, the population, the Census Bureau has it declining. And I don't agree with that. I actually don't think that it's been declining as much as what the Census Bureau, I mean, just based on the number of listings that are out there, or lack of listings in housing and the new housing growth that we have, it just seems like we have this all of a sudden, and it's all getting filled. You know, we talked about the apartments, we talked about the, you know, senior living we didn't talk about. But, you know, you know, that Westview Villas, I talked to Greg back today, he said that's going a lot better than he had ever hoped for. He has 13 of the 14 that are actually built right now sold. So, you know, it's a good positive sign that they're just, as soon as they build them, they sell them. So, the one that's not sold isn't finished yet, about that. So, it's, that's, to me, I think the population number itself, I think, is a little skewed from the Census Bureau. So, we'll see what the new census brings, but if it is, if it does come in in the same trend that it's been going in, I'm going to officially file an appeal to that, so that I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of headcount that's missing there. But the median age has gone up, and five years, a five-year change over that period of time is pretty significant. So, that's, I think that's part of the reason that you, you know, you just talked about.
Some of the folks that I talked to felt that this issue had not been conveyed previously, and that it's a fairly new issue, I guess. Can you just speak to a little bit of how long this has been kind of on the radar, and the discussions that have gone on to get to where we are today?
So, it's actually been on my radar for, probably since about 2016, we started seeing the trend of, the, once you balance the amount of runs compared to being a volunteer department for individuals to respond in, it just becomes to be too much. And what we've seen over that period of time is local businesses not allowing their people to leave. We used to have a few local businesses that would allow their employees to leave to be able to come on calls, but it could only come if it was a fire call, or a crash, or a second EMS call. Well, after a few incidences where they've left and came on a call, but then they didn't necessarily finish the project that they had at their normal job, or they messed up that project or something, it became to a point where those employers were already hard enough looking for people to work for them, that they couldn't afford to allow these individuals to leave on a regular basis to be able to answer the call, which is understandable. So, since 2016, we began seeing that trend of the uptick in the runs, but the downturn in the amount of volunteers that are actually available. So, the National Volunteer Fire Council puts out a lot of data to explain why. Well, a lot of things that point to types of our communities is dual-income families, where both parties need to work. We have younger families where somebody's got to be home with the children, and they're... be home with the children, and there's just not enough time and balance between the two. Another combination is that, is the amount of training that it is involved for us to be able to maintain certifications. So it's not about just going to EMT class that lasts for six months, or fire class that's six months, it's, it's fire class, EMT class, instructor class, inspector class, all these other ones that just add up, and so you have to have X amount of continuing education hours each and every year to be able to maintain those cards. So it does become more of a job rather than just, hey, it's kind of fun. So if we look at being able to try to staff based on what we are to for EMS-wise, that's where you take out those 13, 1,400 runs that we're answering, and then you get those volunteers back for the 215 calls that are fire only, where we want them, that's where we really need their, their help to be coming in on those fire calls, and let us have the, take care of the EMS calls, you know, on that, that staffing piece. So 16 starts, 17 and 18 we began, and I remember, I think it was the 18 to 19 budget season, that we first initially talked about that SAFER grant. And, and when we had that conversation, that's where we, we identified the need, but also identified some areas that we needed to make sure that we provided the data to, to you guys, and we, we did that through the Safety and Human Resources Committee back, and I believe that was in 2018, and then it kind of worked through to the, to the budget of 2019 to 2020, and then it kind of went into the Finance and Budget Committee meeting to figure, okay, we have identified the need, both in the fire department, but also in the dispatch center, and then now how do we pay for it? So that was in the, and then that lasted all the way up until last budget cycle, and we talked a little bit more in length on the, on the SAFER grant, but then furthermore found that it came back to council again, and we, rightfully so, lost track with where our response is for the COVID, that it's kind of sat on the shelf for that, for that last year. So it's, it's definitely hasn't been a new topic, for sure. I know that we've, we've tried to, to educate as much as we possibly can, but it's been something, you know, worked on for, for a long, for a long time.
Yep, thank you. Joel, if you can pull up one more slide for me, the slide that shows the other cities and villages in Northwest Ohio, so some of the other feedback I received was, well, I've never heard of this reciprocity credit before, this must be something new that, that we're just trying to do. So this page was provided to us previously in a council meeting. I just went through there and just kind of highlighted some, so of the 51 cities or villages listed, 27 of those currently have a tax credit under 100%. Of the remaining 24 that don't have a tax credit decrease, 10 of those have a income tax rate that's higher than Napoleon's. So this isn't a new concept, I don't think, and obviously, there's been a lot of problem solving and behind-the-scenes research to see what the best fit is, so thank you guys for your work around that.
Thank you.
Last point I'll make here, actually, I got two more, I'm sorry, guys. I think previous numbers said that there'd be 2,100 individuals being impacted for this reciprocity credit. My wife's one of them, she works out of, out of the city in two jobs, so we're directly impacted. Then Chief Mack and Chief O'Brien, if you guys can just explain the benefits that you guys would see in your staff if this were to pass?
Well, I'll start, okay. The, we, we already see the initial impact right now, just from the, just from the time of being able to get to the point where legislation was drafted, we've obviously seen a huge morale boost within our, within our organization, knowing that there's a light at the end of the tunnel. As I say, when you're doing nine and 10 calls a day, and you, you are one of the only paramedics there, you're rotating these calls, and it's not like it's a 10-minute turnaround anymore. It is 20 minutes to an hour turnaround because you have the decon procedure, you have all the, all the things that come after these calls. So we're very fortunate that with the CARES funding this time, that we're actually able to see what that four people, what that four-person staff does, being able to assign yourself to a truck and be on that truck for the entire day, and be able to rotate where you don't necessarily feel so ran into the ground some days. And so I think long-term retention and recruitment, it's going to be very valuable for our, for our organization.
Good.
Well, first of all, I agree with everything he said, obviously. He says it much better. But the recruitment thing is absolutely, one of the things that we've actually experienced, and I've given you some of the numbers, since this thing happened in 2016 where we reduced staff, we've had a significant issue maintaining dispatchers, maintaining seniority in dispatchers, maintaining quality dispatch, not that there's not quality there, but just that, that on-the-job experience of having a couple, two, three years on your belt, and not being a constant state of training. That's one of the biggest things for us, other than morale, you know, anytime you see an increase, whether it be fire or police calls, that's a direct correlation to a dispatcher. Because we dispatch our own, every one of those calls for service that Clayton's dealing with that has two or three, you know, that are overlapping, that's still one, for the most part, one dispatcher handling all that, and that's not including anything that law enforcement might have going at that time, any of what I call the 411 calls, hey, what's the fireworks tonight, what time is the fireworks, those average day-to-day stuff. So that's where the correlation of the employee burnout is, and that's where I've seen the most, dealing with our dispatchers, is that stress level, and just because when you have two people there, you can kind of bounce things off of each other a little bit, we might be able to dedicate, what we used to do is be able to dedicate a dispatcher directly to fire, if there was a fire scenario, and then we had one dedicated to police. The chances of that happening now are significantly reduced based off this last four years, and we've been in a constant state of hiring. I can't overstress that piece.
Are you guys hiring currently?
We're currently full staff, as I, knock on wood, because that has not been a, that has not been something that we've traditionally been real long.
Been able to say.
Yeah.
Chief O'Brien, you guys hiring?
The fire department is, as, as, we, we just lost Robert Marcinjak, he was a firefighter paramedic that went to Perrysburg City. And, and one thing that did stick in my mind from him when I, when I talked to him of why he left was, he made that comment that he just, he, he didn't want to feel like he was out on an island, and, and so that really kind of hit home that, you know, this is, I get it, you know, we, we're trying to resolve that, I wish that we were going to be able to retain him, he was a great firefighter, great paramedic, he was one of the very first ones that, that didn't go through the Toledo process, where we had lost many individuals before, so I thought he was there for the long haul, but, but, you know, we'll, we'll lose good individuals, I think, if, if we don't get that, that corrected. So I think we're on the right path, and I think that being on the right path of creating a good environment that individuals want to be around, and then you provide them with an equal balance of workload and sense of security and safety and support from, from all of you is, is a huge place in why you want to be employed by the City of Napoleon.
Absolutely, you know, for me, we saw a loss of employees well beyond 2016 when we talked about this, you know, in, in great detail with dispatch at least. You know, a lot of my employees at that point went through, you know, I was their supervisor as a lieutenant, and they went through a stage of, I don't know if I'm going to have a job or not, so they start applying. And they might not have gotten that application approved by some city until a year after we were done with our conversations, but because the money was there, because benefits were there, hours of 12-hour shifts and that, that stress of that eight-hour turnaround, there hasn't been a year that we haven't canceled time off in dispatch. Time off that's been approved because of staffing issues, because of that hiring. My two most senior dispatchers are actually here, Todd, you're at 21?
20.
20 years, and then our next one is Cory, who has five years. That was unheard of back in the day, I averaged probably between 15 and 20 under Chief Weitzel prior to this, this consolidation conversation in 2016. That's what, that's how that's affected my agency.
Well, thank you both. Sorry for putting you on the spot, but I appreciate the feedback.
Thank you.
Hey, don't walk away yet.
This is Chief, right?
But before I go, anyone else have any questions while? Okay. I guess with, with everything you've just explained to us, both of you, there's obviously a need, and my question is with this reciprocity decrease, do you feel this is going to get you to where we need to be, or is this a temporary fix for right now?
So I'll start with the fire department. The fire department, combination department, meaning it's, you have, we, we, I actually talk about us being a three-tiered department, full-time, permanent part-time, and local responders. So why I think that the reciprocity gets us to where we need is because we can still balance that, give them a little bit of growth as a local responder starts, so somebody that worked or lives locally gets on the fire department, we send them up to advanced DMT training and firefighter one, they kind of get a taste of it, does this something that they want to do a little bit more, and if they do, then it offers the ability for them to begin working at the station, and then working at the station then moves up from there. Well, if, to be full-time, you have to be a paramedic, and so I think right now, and in, in for the foreseeable future, Napoleon is, combination departments, the, the most financially efficient department, and being able to offer both local, local advantage and the, the full-time spot where we're busy enough, so yeah, I do feel like this is more of a long-term thing, not just a short-term of what we're getting by being able to marry the full-time and part-time together, because if we go back maybe, say, seven to 10 years, when I started in Napoleon in 2009, and Captain Bowman can contest to this, he was on the part-time side, and I was on the full-time side, I, I actually, as the union president, viewed our department as in a Y. We had the administration on one side, and then we had the, the part-time on another side of the line, and we had the full-time on the other side of the line, and none of us really kind of got together or respected each other in what positions they were coming from. As we've put part-time at the station, and I was an advocate for it at the time as the union president, to be able to start that, that part-time at the station, just on an eight-to-four shift, to be able to marry exactly what we're doing at the station compared to what the local part-time individuals are doing. So the morale, and, and since we've been able to have the part-time together, working with the full-time, I would say that the, the workforce is tremendously different. As you see here, you can't tell whether they're full-time or part-time in the crowd, right? And so, and, and that was the whole point, is that to understand, like, we all are professionals, Napoleon Fire Rescue, it doesn't matter if we're full-time, doesn't matter if we're part-time, doesn't matter if we show up at 3:00 in the morning from home, but we're all part of the same organization, and, and so that's been able to marry it a lot, and I feel that the reciprocity by, by doing this is going to allow them, those individuals that work during the day, it's going to give them the opportunity to work at the station at night, so they can come in, cover a shift, and be able to work alongside them, be the first one on a scene, is, is a, a big difference than coming in from home and then they've already got, you know, the call pretty much wrapped up, so, yeah, I do see it as long-term for us with that fix.
Great. Chief Mack, anything to add, or just?
Well, real short, very few times do I have less words than Chief O'Brien. But yes, in, in, to be as blunt as I can, yes, I do see that, short of us gaining, you know, 10,000 extra calls a year type of thing, this is, we operated very, under Chief Weitzel, we operated very well with six dispatchers that allowed for some of that administrative things to happen. What a, what a lot of dispatch centers, every dispatch center is a little unique. With ours, we're averaging over 1,000 public records requests a year. That's not 1,000 people, or that's not 1,000 records, that's 1,000 people coming in asking for records. Those records could be anything from, that might take up a banker's box amount of records to, hey, I just need a crash report. That's the stuff that's being done by these ladies, right now, all ladies, on top of the squad calls, on top of that other thing. So I do think that six dispatchers will, will get us to a point where we can operate with a lot less stress. It absolutely will give me the flexibility and the schedule to hopefully not, you know, if, the way, the best way I can describe it, six dispatchers, we're on, we're on full, on our gas tank, five, we're in that yellow, hey, you know, I'm looking on the turnpike, I've got 50 miles to go, can I make it to the next one? That's where we're at right now, where we've been at since 2016, is kind of in that five. We're already worried about the next gas fill-up. If I lose somebody, I'm critical, now I'm really starting to think about where I'm getting to that gas station at. Six, I don't have to worry about that, for several, we can lose an individual for, you know, whether it be a pregnancy or a health issue, to a traffic crash, to another job very easily, and still be able to maintain service for the community. I think that's shorter, I'll watch that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Anyone else, either on council, or the mayor, or anyone out in the audience that would like to speak on this topic? Go ahead and come up to the podium and please state your name for us.
Hi, I'm Tanya Walker, I'm the 20-year dispatcher. I never thought I'd be here this long, but I am, fell in love with my job, worked at the fire station for a while, so I know most well, did, know most of the guys really well. And I love what I do, I love to take care of the, the people of our community. The issue that I'm running into, like, like Chief said, with us having the turnover that we've had lately, I'm 20 years in, I'm guessing I've got maybe 10 to go before I hit retirement, and I want to make sure, it took me a good 10 years before I knew most of the workings like the back of my hand, because we do so much. So I want to make sure that when I retire, I'm leaving us in a good place. With Cory only having five years, that leaves me five years to get her to where I was, to where I knew that I had the confidence in me that I could run that, run that department. So that being said, that's hard to do when we have the turnover that we do, and I, I want to feel confident when I retire that I'm leaving our city in good hands. Not that I'm not now, they're, they're great dispatchers, but they're young, they don't know a lot yet, so anything we can do to keep these girls, maybe another man someday, but anything we can do to keep our dispatchers in our center is only going to better our city, and better our department, and be more helpful, be more aware of what we're doing for, for our guys, for the department, for the citizens and the people in. So anything we can do to keep these ladies here is just going to be more beneficial for us, because, again, I only got about 10 years, five if I'm lucky, but, so I just, I want to leave us in a good place, and I want to feel good about it, and, and be comfortable in that when I do retire.
Thank you, appreciate that. Anyone else?
I, Joel, I don't know, this is what was asked of me, is, do we have any sort of plan in place to, to be prepared in the instance of needing, you know, I know Clayton has talked about his asset management for equipment and vehicles and stuff like that, do we ever do anything like that for personnel?
You know, every department's different, and every year, we talk about succession planning, and what we want to see for the departments and everything else, so I think this is a huge step in stabilizing the staff at these two departments. So I think we pointed this out once before, and I think it was highlighted in, in, somewhere in this report here, but at one point, it was the, the two positions in the City of Napoleon that turned over the most were dispatcher and firefighter. At one point, it used to be water treatment plant operator also, they were in the mix. That's, that's not the case anymore, now it's just dispatcher and firefighter. And so that's why, you know, the plan would be to, and, and, and a lot of it was, we're hearing that they don't want to be left on an island, so, and you, and you heard that it's a morale boost, just knowing that there's, you know, some kind of, you know, semblance of hope that this could get approved, or, or that, you know, there's enough care and thought in this process to go through this, to, to, you know, to, to show that there's some hope that they won't be left on an island. So, you know, and, and I think in the, in the fire service, they, they're seeing the, they're getting a taste of what it could be like, you know, with all of the COVID hires that we've had and the way we've handled that, so it's a good, it's a good thing, so. That's, you know, to me, I think, is some of the biggest things, especially in the dispatch section, is just making sure that it's adequately staffed, so that we don't have the worker burnout, or the, you know, the, the feeling of being left on an island. Did that answer your question?
It does, I think the, I think the sentiment was, did, we saw this coming for a few years, and I'm guilty also, because I've been part of the budget planning every year, but, you know, I guess, people who don't want the taxes messed with, obviously, people who don't live in the city more so, just wonder why we were in a situation now that we have to do that in order to, to fully staff, to staff adequately, because there's no question that it's needed, not against it at all, I just didn't really know how to answer that.
Can I answer part of it?
Sure.
If you mind, I think, try to answer it at least. With dispatch, the timeline itself is kind of the answer to that. With dispatch, the timeline itself is kind of the answer to that. It started in 2016 when we started talking about the state audit and consolidating dispatch. That's when we lost all our people. I don't know how else to word that. We saw it happening, and we couldn't control it. And ever since then, all we've done is tried to fill a seat, but we're filling it with very young bodies who are, you know, it's a different world out there. When I started, pretty much everybody here was either born or raised in Putnam County or Henry County. They lived here, they went to school together, that type of thing. It's not the world that I'm in right now. A very transient population, they're looking for what's, the small vision of work, what's good for them right now, and that could be hours, that could be money. But for me, this timeline started in 2016, and it's really been out of our control. At least that's the feeling I have, and I know the feeling that's been around my office. We've tried to do everything we can, but these employees just, you know, they were scared about losing their jobs, so they started looking for jobs. And then they found that there was better opportunities out there. And so that's where I've been. From a volunteer standpoint, Jeff, you've been on our auxiliary, we served together a long time. It's a different world even for auxiliary out there, just along that volunteer. You know, for a long time, there was no training for auxiliary in the grand scheme of things that was mandated from year to year. And we've lost a lot of good senior auxiliary officers statewide, specials for the county, because of the increased training with law enforcement even. That's not a bad thing, but it does have an effect. So, you know, and you just don't get very many people that want to donate their time that aren't getting paid for it anymore. That volunteerism, we've seen it, and I think everybody's seen it, whether it be a parent organization at the school, or, you know, something for the city, no one wants to donate time anymore. So, you know, that's where we've seen it, even in our auxiliary, it's very, very young. And it used to be guys that had been here 20 years, you know, donating every Friday night, so we're seeing even that volunteer loss with us. Does that answer that, or does that give a little bit of?
It helps.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that probably as citizens, maybe the number one thing that we would expect from our city is to be able to provide that type of service, so I don't see any other options. I don't see anything that can be done differently.
When I first got to council, they were just coming out of performance audit, and there was a push to combine dispatch between the city and the county. And our gallery was full, much like it is now, except they were not, we socially distanced, they had to wear masks, I think there actually were more people. And the compromise was made, instead of combining dispatches, we'll just knock the number down to five. And Chief Weitzel said, I can make this work. I think what we've learned in the meantime is, we can make it work, but if you want it to be good, you got to have that six dispatcher. And so, and that's just a key person. And I think what we're seeing right now with COVID, is having those two crews able to roll and do all those things that they can, you know, you look for all the silver linings you can this year, and if that's one of them, then I'm okay with that, to say, hey, we can do this with, better with two crews, and we can have those two, you know, the redundant services, what we need, you know, multiple times, how many times a year right now, Chief? 450?
405.
405, sorry. 405, you know, duplicate calls.
But there was four of those duplicate calls today, that's not in that number.
Okay. So 405-ish.
Yeah.
Ish.
We're, I mean, yeah.
Yeah. So.
They're there.
When you, and when calls go from 1,000 to over 1,500, you realize the stress and the strain you pull, you put on your people. I think you're right, that, I think we're expected to provide the service, and I think this is the best way to do it for the situation we're in. So that's kind of where I'm at. The only question, I think you hit on it already, so I'm not going to ask the question again, so I'm good.
Jeffrey, you have something there?
Nope, you guys know my feeling.
All right. Yes, sir.
Real quick.
Come on up.
Dave Bowen, I'm also the union, for current union president. Laurie, a little bit on your question, you were talking about when this started, I think a lot of this started with us, was previous administration, with that why the chief was talking about. Not the why are we here, but the actual why within our organization, and I think it was kind of buried a little bit. And I think when Chief O'Brien took over, he brought a lot of things to light. Also, what this provides is, and I've done this, said this at Labor Management, is you give me the manpower, and we cannot handle anything for the first 10 minutes of that first call. Whether it's downtown, whether it's a cardiac arrest, whether it's a non-emergency transport, whether it's a car accident. One of the silver linings, Mayor, that you said of COVID, has been the ability, now we've got a taste of what that feels like.
Right.
And moving forward, I think we owe it to our citizens that we continue that. We're talking about affecting the least amount of people to help the largest amount of people, and that's everybody we protect. And I'm one of those people that are affected as well. You know, I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay taxes on the outside of here as well. You know, that's something I choose to do, and I'm 100% for it, because I know at the end of the day, that there's going to be three other guys rolling out the door with me. And I'm not waiting 15 minutes to get an engine out the door when there's smoke in apartment 307 of 120 East Mall Mall. Because that's my nightmare building, that's the one that keeps me up at night, because that's where we're going to potentially lose a lot of people. And there was a night, that is documented, and I brought it up at Labor Management, I waited 15 minutes to get an engine out the door. Now I don't have to do that. So this is what we need.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I guess just a general comment on my part. You know, I understand even what Laurie's saying, I understand people don't want to pay taxes. And I personally have struggled with this ever since it was put in our committee for a year and a half ago. And I understood that. I think the administration did their best work in cutting out the street portion and reducing it. Now, am I in favor of rotten streets? No, I'm not. But I feel the top priority has to be the police and fire. And if we can't do something with them, and we've checked out, as you said, Mrs. Sinclair, we've checked out every other option, I feel we have to do this. And we're not, like you said, we're not the lone person doing a reciprocity. And our other taxes are lower than many of the other cities around us. So while I think we did approve what the citizens wanted in lowering the amount, we have to do this, in my opinion. That's just, the police and fire has got to be top priority, and I agree with Mayor on that, it's got to be top priority.
Thank you, Dan, appreciate that.
Well, I'm with you exactly what you said, I've been just going back and forth, battling with this for a year, year and a half now. Both chiefs know that, I've met with them a couple different times, and most of the time, my thought is, is it really my, me, one of seven people, to be able to affect someone else's taxes that they pay? Obviously, it is in this case, because it's a tax credit they were giving, not increasing anybody's taxes, just taking away a credit that was given to them years ago, when then somebody came up with this reciprocity tax credit. So I've gone back and forth, and I think most of the police officers, firefighters, know that I am very concerned about all of you, I think you guys do an awesome job, I pay attention to what you guys are doing, day in and day out, and know that it is needed so much. And to probably be Chief O'Brien's surprise, tonight I will vote yes on it. I know, we talked about it. And the main thing is, it's needed right now, and as we said, we've looked so many different ways, how can we make this happen for you and for our citizens without doing it this way? And none of us have come up with anything that would take care of it right now. My goal is to hopefully put something on the levy in the next couple of years, and hopefully the citizens of Napoleon realize how important it is for their safety and their neighbor's safety to vote yes for that. But we don't have the time to do that right now, to provide the services that you all continue to give us here. So just want to let you guys know, I appreciate everything you do, appreciate everything administration has done to provide all of this information over the last year, year and a half, including everyone on council. I mean, I learned a couple of things tonight that I didn't know for sure, because, you know, some questions Ross asked, or some homework he did, and some other things, so thank you all, appreciate it.
If there are no other comments, we can do a roll call.
Joe?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
All right, that will move on to third read. Moving on to item I, third reads of ordinances and resolutions. I-1 is ordinance number 043-20. An ordinance accepting the dedication of section of Claremont Avenue between Briar Heath Avenue and Westmoreland Avenue as a public street pursuant to RC 723.03. You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Joel?
Thank you, Council President. The, this is the section of Claremont Avenue by the schools, this is part of the project that was, encompasses the Napoleon area school system campus-wide improvement agreement that we entered in with them. I will say that we do have the bank letter of credit, there's a one-year warranty that they have to cover, so in case there are any catastrophic failures with the road. So we have that in place, and as soon as this is passed, we can dedicate the road officially.
Any questions or comments? All right. Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Okay, that has passed on third read. Okay, moving on to item I-2, resolution number 044-20. A resolution authorizing the city manager to renew a contract with Werler Waste Control and Recycling Incorporated without the necessity of public bidding and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Joel?
Thank you. This is just to extend the contract with Werlers for the recycling for one year, using the same pricing that they had in the previous three years.
And still no comments from anybody?
Any questions or comments? Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
That has passed on third read.
Item I-3, ordinance number 048-20. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of revenue bonds from time to time for the purpose of paying the cost of improving the city's municipal water system, or refunding debt issued by the city for that purpose, and authorizing the execution and delivery of master trust agreement providing for the rights of the holders of the bonds, and pledging certain revenues and funds to secure those bonds, and declaring an emergency. You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Kelly?
Thank you. I do not have anything to add.
All right. Any questions or comments for Kelly? Hearing none, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Okay, that has passed on third read. Moving on to item I-4, ordinance number 049-20. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of water system refunding revenue bonds, series 2020, under Article 18 of the Ohio Constitution, in a maximum aggregate principal amount of $3,165,000, for the purpose of paying the cost of refunding certain outstanding obligations heretofore issued by the city to improve the utility, authorizing various related documents and instruments, including a bond purchase agreement, a first supplemental trust agreement, an escrow agreement, and an official statement, and declaring an emergency. You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Kelly?
Thank you. Joel and I will let council know the final sizing of the bond, and then the updated savings as we receive them. Obviously, depending what happens tomorrow might affect the interest rates, so we'll let you know as soon as we have them.
All right, thank you, Kelly. Any other questions or comments?
This is the water tower, all in on this too. The water tower?
The water tower.
Yes. There was, we had to find funding for the water tower that time, and they said all that was going to get thrown in on this program, is that?
Ah.
Do we know that?
Kelly, do you know which, which bond, for the water bond, what projects?
They're the refunding revenue bonds. I don't know if the water tower is included in that, I can check and let you know tomorrow.
Okay, I was just wondering.
Is that the one, the second one across the?
No, it was this, and they had to do all that revitalization for the water tower.
No, that was, the rehab of the water tower, the painting and everything? That was part of the?
That was all part of this big program.
That was all part of the project.
Yes.
So that's not it, that's not included in this.
Okay.
This is for something else.
Yeah. We've never heard anything more.
It's already been in it, it's already was in that.
It was.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we got a 0% interest for 30 years for that project, and then the water tower was a part of the larger water plant rehab project. Maybe it could have been for the construction of the second water tower, though.
No.
I think that was grant money that time.
Or 70 grand dollars.
I was just thinking about that, I would never really say anything about the water towers. I'd rather check out and see if it's paid for. I have nothing else.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Okay, that has passed on third read. Last but not least, I-6, ordinance number 051-20. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of sewer system refunding revenue bonds, series 2021, under Article 18 of the Ohio Constitution, in a maximum aggregate principal amount of $5,140,000, for the purpose of paying the cost of refunding certain outstanding obligations heretofore issued by the city to improve the utility, authorizing various related documents and instruments, including a bond purchase agreement, a first supplemental trust agreement, an escrow agreement, and an official statement, and declaring an emergency. You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Kelly? Kelly, you still with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Now you're muted again?
Nope.
Due to add.
Now we can hear you.
I have nothing, I have nothing to add, sorry.
All right.
I kept muting itself.
Exactly.
Any questions or comments for Kelly? Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Laurie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Okay, that has passed on third read. Last but not least, I-6, ordinance number 051-20. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of sewer system refunding revenue bonds, series 2021, under Article 18 of the Ohio Constitution, in a maximum aggregate principal amount of $5,140,000, for the purpose of paying the cost of refunding certain outstanding to improve the utility, authorizing various related documents and instruments, including a bond purchase agreement, a first supplemental trust agreement, an escrow agreement, and official statement and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
Can you reread that? I missed that.
Yep, sure can.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Kelly?
Thank you. Again, Joel and I will let you know the final size of the bonds and then the, um, final saving.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Hearing done, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Okay, that has passed on third read. Glad we don't have like five or six reads for all of these. All right, moving on to item J one of Good at the City, discussion on action, master bid ordinance, um, that'll just direct the law director to draft legislation. Anything need discussed on that also?
Nothing through, one through seven. One through seven are annual pieces of legislation that are kind of tied to the budget, um, but if you want to go through each one of them, okay?
Billy, can we do one motion for all seven of these, or do we need an individual?
You could do one motion. Um, if that's the, if that's what council is planning on doing, then I guess I would like to talk about five for just a moment. The allocation of funds, I know that there was, um, some talk about the way in which funds would be used regarding the, uh, the new tax credit, uh, or the change in the tax credit. I guess I would ask that either Joel or Kelly, or both perhaps, get with Tammy to explain exactly how, um, the, the funds that are collected as a result of the, uh, the change in the tax credit, uh, how that will affect the allocation of funds and, because we're going to need to add some language into this piece of legislation regarding the use of those funds. So I would again ask that they get with Tammy and, and helping, helping to craft that one. But yeah, there's no reason you can't, these are all end-of-the-year, uh, pieces of legislation regarding the budget, and, um, if council so chooses, it can direct the law director to draft, uh, one through, uh, one through seven regarding end-of-year legislation.
And I got one comment on item number six too, unless you have anything else, Council President?
I do not.
Just the pay plan will just be generic right now for the budget, just so you know, we're just blanketing in a two percent for, uh, non-bargaining, so that's what we've done every year since I've been here, so council has the ability to, to do whatever you want to do during budget time, so.
We can go through each one of these individually, or entertain a motion to, to do all seven at once?
Motion for all seven at once.
Second.
What's going to be contribution for the C I C?
Uh, right now, we have, uh, the same, thirty-seven thousand four hundred, uh, but they, uh, will be, they have an additional request that they'll be asking for, and, um, you know, we can add it in the budget or supplement later if we wanted to, however we want to handle that.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Since these are all going to legislation, it's something we're gonna have three reads or opportunity for three reads on.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
Yep. Just wanted to clarify for all of them.
So, just for clarification though, the C I C one will be drafted for the thirty-seven four, and then if it, council wants to change it or hear what the C I C director says, then...
Which we'll hear that on Friday, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Will it make it any easier or difficult to, if it's...
No, we can change it.
Yeah.
We can modify that after the first read. You sub two reads after that, so.
Yep. Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Okay, and, uh, J eight, is discussion on action, legislation for water note and pool note to go to bond.
I kept that one separate. I just, you know, didn't want to, didn't know if you wanted to go through anything on this one, or just wait for the legislation, or...
I think we should have the, um, Parks and Rec Director come up and kind of talk and explain some things. How you doing, Tony?
This is, uh, this, so this would be for the, the pool note and the, and the water note. The water note is the two point three five two million dollars, uh, that's from the stranded costs from the water plant study and the U V project that was carved out outside of the, uh, the, the larger water, water plant rehab project. That had to be done first prior to everything else because of the timing. Uh, we're under EPA orders to get that project done, for those that weren't, weren't around for that. So, um, total of about, um, I believe, uh, well, for the pool note, um, we're going with the, and this includes the note, uh, issuance fees of, uh, three point nine five million total, so, um, you know, interest rates being where they're at and, you know, I mean, obviously, that's a little bit of a moving target, but, um, that's, uh, that's kind of where we landed on that, so that's what we're projecting and we'll have in this legislation for that, so. Other than that, Kelly, do you have anything else to add for this?
Not at this time, other than we'll have to do another preliminary official statement, but we can use some of the stuff that we used from the refunding, and the notes are due on February twenty-fifth, so we will bring legislation, um, hopefully, in the first read, it would be in December, and then the final read would be in January, and then we would do the bonding time to pay off the note.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to item J ten, discussion on action, acceptance of donation from Ace Hardware to the police and fire departments. Joel?
Oh, um, Chief, you wanted to talk about the...
Hand sanitizer.
Yes.
Uh, Ace Hardware donated a case of hand sanitizer to both fire and police.
Nice. Thank you.
Much appreciated.
All right, we have a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Okay, that's been accepted. All right, we'll go around the table here, and we'll start with Molly today.
Um, well, Ross and I had a nice time touring a couple of facilities, so I wanted to thank Chief Mack and then Jeff and Aaron for showing us the water treatment plant, and then also, um, Joel did a really nice job at the schools. I listened in Napoleon's on the Tipp district and explaining that, so. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Jeff?
I'm quiet tonight.
Lori?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, are we going to do the budget meeting in here, or are we going to do it upstairs at the firehouse?
Did we get any answers from the technology department?
Yeah, we did.
We did.
He said there's nothing over there to do any recording.
Okay, so we can do it here?
And, uh, the bathroom setup over there isn't the same as over here.
Right.
Too, so it's just, it's a little bit different. I mean, the space is great, it's just, uh, yeah.
Do we need to, uh, go spread out in the gallery a little bit, take some of the chairs out, put some more tables in there, and spread out a little more?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Uh, earlier this evening, I plucked a Roxanne and Councilman Durb over here, and I think between the two of them, they have a plan to make me fit up there somehow.
Okay.
So...
Do, do we want to spread out more is the question?
We talked about potentially adding a, a table or something here, or back in the back.
Okay.
With some chairs, so.
All right, cool. Uh...
Mayor, you can sit in the middle.
Congratulations to the, uh, the cross-country team that ran, um, at districts, no.
It's regionals.
Regionals, thank you. Those that qualified from districts into regionals, um, I know they had a, a long season. Also, congratulations to the, uh, the football team and keeping that rock right here at home. In case nobody's told you yet, tomorrow's the day for the election. I know, right? If you haven't done so already, please vote. Was on a conference call Friday morning with Governor Dewine and his team and some other people here from Henry County. A lot of counties are having the same kind of issues that we're having here. You're starting to see a, a second kind of surge of COVID come. It's not really coming through the schools like we feared. It's not necessarily coming through some of the, uh, assisted living and those kind of places. A lot of the, it's coming from those social gatherings. And if you don't believe that masks don't work, you know, we're putting all these kids in school every day and they're wearing masks, and yes, there is that, it is there, um, but you're not seeing the big outbreaks like you might see if they weren't wearing masks. So, wearing masks work, um, we're just going to rededicate ourselves to that. I know we're all in a race right now, and the worst part of it is, we don't know where the finish line is. We can't even see the finish line yet, and so we keep running, and we want to get to the finish line, we still don't know where it is. I keep telling myself, we're day colder than we were yesterday, um, so hopefully, we'll get that, that kind of stuff kind of taken care of soon. Joy Erwin, uh, from the Henry County Health Department, uh, did a really, really nice job explaining the difficulty her, her department is facing and some of the challenges they may have going forward. Governor Dewine is very engaged, doing a whole conversation, it was nice, about an hour-long conversation, uh, for, on Friday morning, so, um, those of you that are left that normally wear a badge when you go to work, thank you for all you do. Also need a, a, uh, a, uh, conversation personnel executive session.
Just helping you with your choice.
Oh, thank you. That's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ken?
I have a question. Do we have a campground beginning on the Hograve property on Oakwood Street? There has been a tent set up a couple of weeks at the back end of the property, right by the, uh, dike around the yard waste site.
On the Hograve property, on the south side of the entrance of the yard waste site?
Right.
Yes.
So that would actually be...
On the, on the replanted property that they, they just did.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's the newly replanted.
Been a tent set up out there for a couple of weeks now.
Really?
We have, uh, we have checked it a couple of times, still got to find someone in it, but we're aware of it and keeping an eye on it.
Okay.
Wondering if it's a homeless type.
I wondered if it was the same people that were under the bridge by Fred Girkens for a while, if they moved out.
I went out the yard waste site, take some stuff out there, so I said, "Come on, Linda, we're going out there." Sure enough, I said, "Boy, we must have a campgrounds going on here." There was three pickups and a nice fire going on. I think, "You want to go join them?" She said, "No, let's go home." Yeah, I, I thought maybe that somebody has purchased that land, or...
Well, I don't know.
Richard Leslie is handling it.
He is, and, and he informed me that, I mean, he's got it for sale, he's not keeping them, so, and, uh, that, that he had, uh, interested buyers for at least two of them. I can follow up with him. I think he split it off into four lots?
Three. It's three with more yet to come potentially.
Nice.
Rox?
Um, as Molly mentioned, we did get a tour of the, the police department and water treatment plant. Chief Mack is very nice meeting Cory and Jamie and Ed, so tell them thank you, uh, then Jeff and Aaron as well at the water treatment plant. As Mr. Mayor mentioned, tomorrow is election day, please go vote regardless of the outcome, be kind to one another, please respect each other. That's all I got to have.
Dan?
Nothing to add, sir.
All right. Kelly?
Thank you. We're just finalizing the proposed budget for Friday and prepping for the rating agency call on the twelfth.
Thank you. Billy?
Thank you. Council reduced residential building permit fees, uh, by ordinance twenty-one eighteen from July first, twenty eighteen through, uh, December thirty-first of twenty nineteen. This reduction was extended for a year as a result of resolution eighty-six nineteen, which is set to expire at the end of the year. If council would like to discuss extending it again, this should go to Muti Properties, which I believe is meeting on the ninth at seven thirty, and Joe, you can refer that out. Number two, uh, council renewed the agreement with the Ohio Historic Preservation Office by, uh, resolution ninety nineteen on December sixteenth, twenty nineteen, uh, and we've noticed through, uh, research that neither the original contract nor resolution ninety nineteen listed a timeframe for the extension, um, so, didn't know if there was some status update on that, or, or what was going on, if it was still needed. I believe, uh, that this resolution is necessary, uh, to use HUD funds, so it's something that I think at least needs to be discussed. I, because of, because of the language in the last resolution, I think that a simple motion to extend, uh, the, the authorization for Joel to continue to, continue to take, take advantage of this, I think that would be sufficient, but, uh, those are the two things I have.
Is that the, Billy, is that the one that came from the, uh, Mummy Valley Planning Organization?
Yes.
Okay. We could check with them and, and circle back and... They're, they're the ones that, that report out to HUD and C D B G for the funding that we use from them.
Yeah, I was just going through some, some of the end-of-the-year stuff, and I was noticing some things that, uh, may, may need attention, so I wanted to bring those two points up.
Nice. I can check.
Wasn't that for five years?
Yeah, I can, I can check.
That extension?
Let me know if it needs to be added to, uh, committee or, um, next council. Thank you. Joel?
Thank you. So, we talked about the, the housing fee item, so that'll come to, uh, the committee, and then, uh, Glenwood Avenue has been repaved. It is done. They worked until, uh, seven forty-five tonight. It's all finished. If you head home that way, make sure you take a little scenic tour, go down that road. And... Uh, just, just wanted to let everybody know that, uh, Chad and Aaron, um, have been Uh, just, just wanted to let everybody know that, uh, Chad and Aaron, um, have been working pretty hard. And, uh, they've been through the wringer in a lot of the projects. Um, as you know, with COVID, kind of having that rubber band effect really impacted them now because all of a sudden, work stopped, and now all of a sudden, it's starting all at once. And, uh, they just got really slammed with work. Um, they've been working, uh, Aaron was out there tonight, so, uh, working long hours and, uh, uh, just having the time with it, so. Uh, I just wanted to point out that there, there's, uh... Just wanted to tip, tip my hat to the, those that deserve it, you know, sometimes, and they've, they've been, they've been through it these past, uh, couple months, so. If you see them, say thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
I got a question, Joel.
Yeah.
When's Park Street area gonna get, I thought we were supposed to do that yet this year.
Uh, phase four? So Park Street, phase four, uh, is...
That was water line on Park Court?
Yeah, I believe that's, uh, so that did, along with Euclid and Oberhaus, are moved to... That, that's already encumbered, that's going to be in the spring, start of the spring. And then, uh, the other two.
All right.
That way, we don't mess up the, everything up, kind of like how we did on the other one, where we did a bunch of work in the winter time, and then it kind of stopped.
Sure.
So it just made sense, and the contractor was good with the schedule that way.
All right, because the neighbors are asking me, when they're gonna start tearing up my yard?
Spring.
Okay.
And then same with, uh, Oberhaus and Euclid should be... We gotta move Oberhaus Interceptor Project to next year because of some easements. I think, uh, some of you are aware of that, um, some of the easement issues that are over there. And the, uh, Euclid, we're, we're gonna go out to bid here. Hopefully, in the next council meeting, we'll, we'll have it on the agenda.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you.
All right. Um, yeah, I don't have anything new. Um, had a couple of things I was going to mention, but as already mentioned, so. Um, Roxanne, do you have anything that we need to discuss at all for Friday, or...
Just whatever you want for lunch.
Okay. Okay. Awesome. All right. We'll move on to, uh, executive session. We have a motion to go into executive session for, uh, compensation of personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Rox, please call the roll.
Joe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
All right. I think we're gonna go into room, and it'll just be for...